Good evening. Welcome to the Beverly Hills Board of Education, August 22nd, regularly scheduled meeting. We're going to jump right into it. Apologies for those that are tuning in live for our delay tonight, just busy afternoon. And we'll start with our flag salute, Mrs. Marcus on our pledges.
I will now read the mission and vision. Mission is the educational excellence and the vision, our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world. And the pledge for the community, the Beverly Hills Unified School District community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. I need an approval for the agenda. I'm going to remove item eight and move item 18, public comment into its place.
I will so move.
I will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Dr. Breggy, report of closed session action.
Thank you, President Margot. There are two items to speak about today. In closed session, the board has voted five to zero to approve OAH case 2023030789. And the board has voted five to zero to approve OAH case 2023070153. And that is the end.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. The board had a very robust study session earlier today regarding board goals, evaluations, and the strategic plan. And then, of course, as always, a robust closed session, which delayed us a little bit into open. So thank you for everybody's patience. Welcome staff that's here tonight. Our BHEA leader, Elena Castanan, is here. Our guests are here. And thank you all for joining us and sticking with us. We're going to move into, I had moved public comments, so we're going to move those right now. I want to call up Nulufar Khalili and Nazrin Benham. And we'll need six minutes on the clock there, sir. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm here today to talk about mental health and wellness, and how important it is for our teens. Poor mental health in our youth can lead to other health behavior risks, life experiencing violence, increased risk of drug abuse, and higher risk of many other things. Youth with poor mental health may struggle with school grades, poor decision making. Right now, I'm here to say, how can we help? What can we do? At our mental health classes with Bianca Foundation, we have experienced compassionate and certified coaches specialized in adolescent health to help and teach our teens to build positive social emotions, positive thinking, positive communication skills and behaviors. It is very important to our youth to develop good mental health. And where better to do this when they're in school? Please support and make these classes mandatory and help our youth make better decisions, be better for their future.
Thank you. Hi, Dr. Breggy.
Hello, everybody. I miss every one of you. Thank you so much for the time. And my associate, Charona, one of our member at Bianca Foundation, we are here to help only. We created this foundation after what happened to my kids. And we don't want this happen to anybody else. And they really need it. And after the pandemic, when it started, we right away started the Zoom. And kids in bedroom, their bedroom, they were coming out, they're talking, they were listening even if they were not talking. We have so many kids. So we want this school, the school of my children, their whole life, we want this to get benefit from it. We have one of the mother who has, she has a concern and she wanted to talk just for a minute, if it's possible. Thank you so much. And looking forward, working with you guys.
Hi, I'm a grandmother and my granddaughter is in high school. I remember the first that she started high school, we had a very terrible time. Every day she was coming home, she was very upset from what she was seeing in the school. She has even a video that a kid was using Coke in the class. She has the video. And she had nightmare. Believe me, she had nightmare. I still, ever since she started these classes, she was a little bit more calm and she bonded with other kids and with the class helped her to be able to, you know, get adjusted with the things in the high school. I have two other kids in Beverly Vista. I really, really think that they needed to start these classes from the, you know, beginning before they come to high school and get shocked with these things that they see. And I'm sure they can get bound together. They have a, it's a big support for them. I really think it's essential for kids to start these classes from the, you know, middle school at least. With Bianca Foundation, that I think they, my daughter, my granddaughter got a benefit, really benefit, good benefit from this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Like I said, I'm postponing my now and no one knows to the next meeting because we're running late and, and I can, so I did. Consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Marcus, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving, that's, I think, the first time this year so far, we didn't pull something from consent. So that's a milestone. Thank you, staff, for your thoughtful responses to our queries. Sophia, you're up.
Oh, okay, perfect. Okay. Um, so obviously, starting off, all our schools opened and went back last week. We had, I'd say, a very successful first week back. At the high school, at least, it was really nice seeing everyone. And there was a really palpable sense of community and joy and just getting to see everyone again, and welcoming in all our new students. That was great. Here we have our first day of senior year streak being kept by the class of 2024 Instagram. A photo here from senior sunrise, now affectionately dubbed senior fog rise, on account of no sun present that took place the morning before the first day of school. And here are new school onsite resource officers bonding with the students, which has been a great addition to lunchtime activities. Then, again, more lunchtime fun. And lastly, we, just a plug, our first home football game is next week, Thursday at 7:00 PM against Maya Angelou. So yeah, everyone be there, be square. And yeah, that about wraps it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia.
Your, your head was covering the HS on Maya Angelou High School, and it just looked like, well, against Maya Angelou.
Oh, no. Yeah, Maya Angelou.
Hell of a poet, but you should see her distance throw. Dr. Breggy?
Good evening, Board of Education. Take a second to just switch over here. Brief report for you, as Sophia had just talked about, we had a successful beginning to our school year. I know that at our opening day, we talked a lot about data and this data driving our decisions. So as we had spoken earlier today, even with our strategic plan, I hope that you are starting to see that this, this real focus on data is something that you're going to see more consistently throughout the school year. So I wanted to start off in that theme to present you some enrollment numbers. And this is just the seven days of school that we've had. Today was day seven. And at the top, it is the total number of students that were actually in classrooms. And then our area student information system is in the middle. And so there is a final column there that will tell you what, basically what our attendance is. And so as you can see, this is, these are the kind of numbers that we want to see. In our strategic plan, and even at the last school year, I talked to you a lot about just chronic absenteeism. And I'm working closely with Mrs. Collins Williams in Student Services. And as you heard earlier today in our presentation, that, you know, we've got protocols and procedures in place to improve a chronic absenteeism. But these are the numbers we want to see. And so as you can see, 97% here of students that are in class is really positive to start off with the first seven days of school. So I wanted to share with you, this is our total enrollment. And so we are still looking at, we always, we say that these are kind of the warm bodies in the seats. And so we are now going through students that are not showing up, or there's an empty seat, that we are making contact with families so that we can shore up those numbers for you. Let me give you a little bit of information, enrollment by school. As you can see in this particular graph, that we have what's in our student information system, and this is at the high school in orange. And so you can see that we're, you know, still fluctuating. We may have a new student that starts, we may have one that didn't show up. But you can see where our attendance is as of today, which is 98.4% with 1,187 students. You can see over to the right in green for BBMS, that again, we're really high with 97% with 735 students. And then over to our elementary schools in the area system, as of today, 614 students, the 93.93 and a half percent attendance, and then 548 at Horace Mann. And so essentially, I wanted to just give you kind of an idea here. This is actually pretty exciting news that I have. We've been trending down for a variety of reasons. We know that people are having less babies. There's a lot of competing factors when it comes to our enrollment. But this is exciting to be able to share with you that we are actually in an uptick. And we've talked about this before, that people are going to be starting to come back. And we have increased enrollment with TK sections. And so I'm really glad to see that we are starting to have our uptick here. And this will be really interesting to see where this goes throughout the year and next year. And what we'll do is, is consistently provide you with some enrollment information that so that we don't wait till the end of the year and then share with you where we're at. We want to be able to consistently be able to report on this. We'll probably do, Mr. Guzman, for like a demographic study. I think it's been like over a year. So we'd like to do those every couple of years. So that's something that we'll work on is another demographic study, which will be important to help guide us into our future years. At our earlier strategic plan meeting, I talked about our real focus this year with the leadership team was our strategic plan, which is very academic based. We have not gotten to this, a place to really analyze the work of the Behavior and Accountability Advisory Panel. We're really thankful that this group met all through the summer with us every Monday. There's really good work here. We did not want to take away from that work and, and just give you a quick summary. We, we want to make sure that we follow through with what we said we would do. And that is, you know, we had talked about that we wanted to work through our leadership team. Now, the behavior, there is a behavior goal. And so we want to make sure that when we meet with our leadership team and our principal site administration, that we're able to take this work and, and work this into our strategic plan. This is not an offshoot. This isn't something that's just a peripheral program. This is, this needs to be embedded, like chronic absenteeism into our work. And you saw earlier today that we were able to do that in a goal. And at our next meeting that we have, which will be the first week in September, I think it's September 12th, if I'm not mistaken, that we will be able to share more with you because our leadership team will have met. So we will have time to take that deeper dive into the Accountability Advisory Panel work. And many things we've already started on, but there'll be a more comprehensive update to you. The reason I'm presenting it now is I, this is a real big focal point of our strategic plan. And I didn't want you to think that this, this was not part of our work. It's, we want to give this the just time with the leadership team. And we just haven't had that, that opportunity to meet. Now that the beginning of the year is off, we're off to a good start. Our first leadership team meeting, I believe, is on the 6th of September. So we will have this then for you on the 12th. And I'm really excited to be able to share this work with you in greater detail. Just a quick picture from earlier today. And I want to thank our board for allowing us to have this, this experience. And that's really what it is. I mean, this has been a very unique experience to have the feedback, to have the time with the Board of Education, to kind of jump into this together, into this work. We feel very comfortable with the sessions. We have really tightened up this process. If you think back to where we were just a few years ago, and, you know, we had a trainer come in, a consultant who is still doing strategic plan work, like from 20 years ago. And we really, that was the launch. And, and we have launched so far from where we started. It's almost embarrassing to look back at some of that work because it's really moving along. And the accountability piece has kicked up a notch. And it's, it's really focused on the data piece, as I mentioned before, and the accountability piece, because the board has allowed us to take some risks. And we're putting a lot of pressure on ourselves with our goals. But, you know, if you don't push and you don't experience failure, you'll never get to the successes. And today, we didn't get finished with the plan, but I felt a good vibe in the room. And there were some really good questions. You know, this work is really important, and I appreciate the board really putting the brakes and just like wanting to understand it before we moved on. And, you know, didn't allow us to, nor did we want to, to just gloss through it. You know, every step of the way, I felt like the board was with us and understood the work that we're doing. And I appreciate the questions. Tomorrow, there is a great opportunity for me as a superintendent. State Superintendent Thurmond is hosting an education and hate conversation, and it's, it's, it's being virtually streamed. But it's, it's all about education. And so there has been a rise in antisemitism. And so it's important as a superintendent to be able to really get in and understand what is, is happening, not only in our own community, but throughout the country, throughout the world. Because this, we have to be able to understand. I certainly need to get a better understanding, not only the, just the history and the identity, but I really need, as an educator, to be able to work with my team, to come up with specific ways through education and to help our families, our students for ending hate. And without this conversation, you know, these didn't exist before. And so now they're bringing these conversations to leaders in school districts. And I couldn't pass up this opportunity. So I'm really looking forward to attending this tomorrow. And I will update the board on the progress. But I think these are the types of conversations we need to have in order to see any change and to see improvement. And so I'm really excited for this opportunity tomorrow. We've pushed out We've pushed out this new format for construction updates, and I hope that you like it. I know that I'm getting really good feedback from the community, who is always wondering and asking about our construction program. So there's a lot of great things happening. I know that we, we do board updates. I know that Mr. Karat is going to be doing another construction update at our, at our board meeting. But I hope that you like this format. I hope that you like, it's the sharing of this information, because this is really needed. The community needs to see, you know, how far we've come. And things are really starting to shape up and really look different. And so we're at that stage where this is really exciting. So we want to share with you this progress as we move along forward. So this was quite a weekend. And so as you know, and everyone here certainly experienced our tropical storm and hurricane as the bonus during this whole time. And I want to thank the board and our community for their understanding. You know, determining whether there's school or not is really a very difficult decision to make for a superintendent and a school board. There's no right answer. I have a lot of history in making this decision. And I really want to thank our board for getting, you know, getting the communication, but also having the discussions. I spoke to President Margot several times through this situation. And I'm really glad that oftentimes what happens is you get a superintendent that makes a decision that has an adjacent school district, and that puts some pressure on you. And so I immediately called President Margot, and, you know, we had that discussion because it, you know, my email, I have people on both sides. And so, you know, you should close, you should stay open. And it is not a quick decision to make. There's a lot of factors. Being in our schools, working with Mr. Hassan, having a team that's actually in our schools, monitoring what's happening, that was a real key for us, is that I knew that we would be able to do that. I think we're exhausted. I think we still haven't caught up from the lack of sleep. But having us there to be able to experience what's happening in our schools, to make sure that it's safe for kids, that monitoring, that happened all night long. And so we really took this very seriously. Every day of instruction counts. And so as we've talked about absenteeism, we wanted to make sure that, that we're safe. And we knew that we were safe, that's why we made that decision. So I just want to thank you for that. Most superintendents in California will go their whole career without having to make that decision. But, but we've made that decision. And thank you for that ongoing conversation, so that we can make a really good decision on behalf of our students and our staff. And that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Brighi. Any comments? Rochelle?
Well, I just want to ask a question, Dr. Brighi. You talked about the percentage of kids in, and you have ARI's. Now, these kids that are in ARI's are kids that are enrolled, right?
Yes, they're in our student information system.
Maybe some of them are not coming back at all, so we really don't know whether there's, they're just absent right now.
So we've done enough calling. So there's been, since there's been seven days, I mean, the offices have been making calls, so those numbers are right on.
So those students that are in ARI's are still enrolled in the school probably?
So we've removed those students that are not showing up. I mean, we're still looking at those numbers, but there are very few people that have, have told us that they're coming back and that they're not here. We're pretty, we're very confident about the numbers.
The other thing, this symposium about antisemitism, is that open to the public? And is there any way that anybody can tune in on it, where, when it'll be, or is it?
I can check. I know that that was passed through superintendent channels, but I can check to see if that's public.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to say in regards, thank you, Dr. Brighi, for your presentation. In regards to the strategic planning session, I thought it was fantastic, and I want to thank the entire leadership team for their time in preparing those materials. I, to me, it was absolute laser focus. And so I'm very much looking forward to what the school year will, will bring for us. In regard to your attendance to, at the antisemitism seminar, I'd love if you could share with us. I attended one a couple of months ago, I think I mentioned to you.
You did.
I left our Laxta event early, and it was LEUSD's superintendent put it on, and it was fantastic. So maybe we can compare notes after the fact.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, I'd just like to thank all of the leadership team and all the incredible thinking that has gone into the strategic plan for this year. I'm excited to see the rest of it, the part that we did not see today. But that, it's really gratifying to see the evolution of our strategic plan and how much focus and how clear we're getting, and more clear we're getting each year. So I'm very excited about it, and I really want to thank everybody for the work that's gone into it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, colleagues. Moving on to 11A, can I get a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Beverly Hills Unified School District and the Beverly Hills Education Association CTE Teacher Pay Scale.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 12, Mr. Seaman.
Good evening, Board of Education, and thanks for having me. One of the things that we had discussed second semester during our strategic plan updates was the evolution of AI and ChatGPT. And one of the things that we wanted to work with our BGA of our teachers, our administration, both at the site levels, district level, but even our surrounding districts, was just coming up with ways to be able to inform the community and the district of the benefits of AI, but also the areas of concern with AI. And so what you have before you is our recommendation, basically to the Board of Education, around updates that we have done towards the Norman Guide and the Bulldog Guide. Two, I want, if you could zoom in here. We also had the opportunity to create appropriate use for AI for students to consider and inappropriate use. All these posters will be posted within each of the classrooms, both at BVMS and at the high school, in addition to, zooming in again. Do the right thing. So what's happening with AI? So tomorrow, we are actually starting with our 12th grade English classes. Our administration, our instructional coaches, our English teachers, will be discussing with our students not only our expectations of behavior on campus, but also our academic expectations of our students. And one of the things that they'll be going through is actually not only the policy itself, but also just the right way to utilize artificial intelligence, whether you're utilizing that as a tutor at home, but then also addressing the inappropriate uses as well. And so really, this is just kind of an informational item for the Board of Education. We just wanted to be able to bring this back. But I do want to publicly just address, this conversation did start way back in January. It was one of our larger topics during our February Professional Development Day during second semester of last year. We were able to create a cohort of teachers that collaborated with district administration sites to work on all these documents and these concepts throughout the semester and to summer professional development planning. And so I need to thank Karen Legola, Nancy Minnacosi, Anne Marie Fein, Susan Fox, and Rachel Kaufman. But we also had teachers represented from CTE to math to science that participated in these conversations to draft this information. And like I stated, tomorrow, our students will start to be exposed to this concept to ensure that we're working with our students too collaboratively, to make sure that we aren't kicking AI out of the equation, but really teaching our students to utilize it in an effective and efficient way, but also setting some very strong parameters around cheating still, I'll call that. And just for those that are wondering, we do have tools that do detect AI for homework assignments. So some of the tools that we were able to purchase during April of last year do have AI detectors now. So they will be able to pick up on the writing strategies in which students are utilizing while using ChatGPT. So turnin.com, those types of things will indicate whether or not a student is utilizing AI to draft that response. It's the way that it's created, it's the way it's formatted, so students don't copy and paste AI and then put it into your homework. That's the message. Any, I'm sorry, thank you.
Rochelle? We'll start with you.
Thank you. I once remember hearing this word plagiarism. And this is, it's gone above and beyond it now, really, with the age of technology and what have you. And I'm particularly pleased that the level of understanding of what it will amount to for the kids and how it will be treated, you have really set the standard very high for what will be serious infractions and so on. So they can't, that they think they're going to get away with it, the chances are they're not, for the most part. I used to have a very interesting saying when I taught. And I taught, this was when I was teaching science, and I would start grading papers, and I would say, wait, I saw this answer somewhere else. And then I'd go to another one, I think I saw this somewhere else. And I used to say to the students, you know, I don't care if you cheat, if you cheat or take from one another, but you know it's going to come out in the wash, because when I give the test, you can't do that, and it's going to show up. So just know that you're not getting away with anything. So that was my, but it's now evolved into something even more than I could have imagined while I was teaching. But I am grateful for what you've done here, and I'm glad you've taken such a stand and really outlined what is, and so they'll understand. And there's another thing, there's no excuse to be informed, there's no excuse. To be informed, you get to behave, the consequences will be there. So no excuse to the law when you're informed. Thank you.
Dr. Stern?
Yeah, this is great. I remember when this came around about nine months ago, ChatGPT, people were starting to talk about in these different language models. And even the, the originators said, you know, this is something we've made, and I don't know if it's a good thing, it's actually dangerous. And they, they actually admitted that. But, and then I wonder too, if there are teachers who have actually gone ahead and taken one of the question prompts and generated AI and said, look, here it is. So we've already done it, you know what I mean? It's kind of like a psychological.
Well, even working through this, one of the funny things was one of the instructional coaches actually utilized ChatGPT to see if they would create their own policy around cheating and what it would recommend. And so that was very interesting, too, to be able to see what they are even saying about what school districts should utilize and stuff. So it's very helpful resource, 100%. And so we don't want to deny that resource to students, but we want to be able to gauge their authentic work, to make sure that we're not creating educational gaps that can't be closed before they leave us, you know? So we want to teach them how to use that resource, but we want to make sure we know where they're at as learners and continue to help them grow.
And then I see also on another note about academic honesty is this issue of taking home exams without the knowledge and consent of the instructor. So I did hear, like, I have heard over the last, you know, two years, that there are concerns in the high school that somehow there are some kids who've supposedly gotten access to former tests, and then they memorize the answers and go ahead and then ace the test, and then others aren't privy to that same information. Have you heard anything about that? Because that has been a concern that several families have.
Yeah, we, it's a mixed bag. So we do get some speculation sometimes where people will say so and so may or may not, and there've been investigations whether a student maybe had taken a photo of an assessment, and then maybe had texted or shared it with a friend. And so we can only investigate to the point of, you know, privacy concerns, entering student devices, those types of things. So they're always addressed. But if there is any concern, please reach out to that site-specific administration, and they will dig into that for sure.
Thank you.
Sophia?
Sure. Just as sort of eerie as the idea of an AI-based AI checker is, the idea of the proper use section being put up for all kids, especially in the middle school, showing them that this is something that can actually help them instead of being used as a crutch, just seems really beneficial, and I really appreciate that.
I just want to thank you for the timeliness of this. I really appreciate this, bringing this to our district and how current you are in having this out in time for the beginning of the school year. I think that obviously this isn't going to go away, it's only going to get bigger. And as well, I would expect that our policies will start to evolve along with it. So it's a great starting point for us as a school district to have this as our base now, so I appreciate it. And I mean, I do think there's many benefits to it as well, and it's really teaching how to use this tool responsibly. And we were at a Rotary event, and Ted Lou spoke, Congressman Lou, and one of the Rotary members in the audience looked, asked ChatGPT what question to ask Congressman Lou about ChatGPT and AI. So it was funny, he read what the actual question was, and it was good. So it's interesting, and it'll be fun in some ways as well. And I do think it's, it has many benefits to it, but also there's many pitfalls and concerns to be aware of, and will continue to evolve. So thank you.
Thank you. This looks great. Do you have any intention of rolling it down into the middle school? Or is it, from where you stand, not an issue based on the coursework that they have as compared to the high schoolers?
No, this definitely will roll down to the middle school. Yep. So everything that you see branded here with the high school, it will be branded with BVMS as well. So Gretchen Gabrowski, who's the I-4 coach there, Dr. Skan, the principal, they have these documents too. It really did come from that high school cohort originally, just organically, right? Like it was introduced to us really by a concept of this AI around like January, if even a little bit earlier around December. The teachers really wanted this as a PD topic during our February 17th day. And then from there, those instructional coaches at the high school and some of the teachers really took this on and kept moving forward with it, doing a lot of research and attending a couple of different conferences on this specific matter, and bringing all the information back and sharing. And so it was even one of the topics during the opening days for the teachers. So this is timely for us as a community, as it's rolling out tomorrow at the high school first. But the teachers have already been talking about it as of opening day at the site level, the Thursday when we came back on the 13th of August.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just remembered this expression, to be forewarned is to be forearmed.
Oh, yeah. Thank you very much, Destin. I know the board had talked about this earlier in the spring, and the fact that it's the beginning of school year and it's come to fruition is very much appreciated, I know by myself and my colleagues. And we'll see how it, see how it works now. Because do we have a plan in place? There have been instances where children have been, or students have been accused, at least at the college level, students have been accused of using ChatGPT to write a paper when they actually haven't. And then they had to argue their cases. So do we have a system in place for that in case students' work gets flagged, but it genuinely isn't, you know, plagiarized?
Yep. And that appeal process would go to our Assistant Principal of Instruction at both locations, and then if ever escalated, it would come to the Ed Services Office. So it would come directly to me as well.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Terrific. Good luck with that. Moving on to Business and Finance, 13A.
I'll make, I'll make a motion for the rejection of claim number 621075.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern and Mrs. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the rejection of claim number 625110.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern and Mrs. Marcus. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 14A.
I'll move for the approval of agreement with the Civil Land Works for the Venecotopographic Survey and Civil Engineering.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern. You guys are dominating in this area tonight. Any questions?
I have one. Is this the area, is this the area that is next to Olympic Boulevard?
It's on.
It's on. Is this the Olympic that's next to, I mean, the area by Olympic Boulevard?
Yes, it is. I could explain more if you'd like.
No, no, I just wondered if that had something to do with the other oil wells or the other areas that we were.
No, it doesn't. This is just the old Veneco site. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14B.
I'll move for the approval of agreement with Hancock Park and DeLong Incorporated for the school facilities grant and consulting.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? I had asked staff about this and I was informed that the company that we've prior used is phasing out on their own choice.
We, we actually went out and looked for a couple of different companies to help us. We, to, because we want to make sure, this company is helping us with facilities modernization grant funding. So we're going out and looking for, you know, those modernization dollars that we're looking at to continue our construction projects. I wanted to make sure we had a company that we are, that's very solid. And essentially we went out, got quotes and this one came back, I think, when we looked at it with Will and Founder Salar and our team, I think we landed on this company as the best one. It also was the best quote. So we feel very confident that they'll guide us to making sure we get those funds. Again, that process could take three to five years, but it's worth it.
Okay.
Are you talking about the modern, are you talking about the modernization funds that we might be eligible?
Correct, yes.
And have we also finished with the seismic funding?
Yes, we've received those funds.
Those are all done and we're not applying for any more?
No, no, those are all completed.
All right, terrific, thank you.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, 15A.
I'll move for the approval of agreement with California Industrial for Emergency Repair Services.
I'll second the motion.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Judy, was that a aye on you?
That was a aye, aye, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Motion carries. One, one is enough, it's not Chicago.
I will move for the approval of the agreement with the Quality Fence Company Incorporated for replacement of the windscreen at Beverly Vista Middle School.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. I had a quick question on this because I know that the, I just wanted to ask what the life of these screens are because I know that in the last few years we had changed a screen. But in going by BV the other day, it was pretty much Saran Wrap. So I'm fully in support of this, I'm just wondering what the life is? And do we get one that has a longer life in the future?
So I, the current life of the screen type that we have, that's not completely opaque, is about seven to 10 years. We replaced about three years ago the Northfield section where the Bulldog Aid Center is going in. And that, the new product we're using should give us about 15 years. It's a solid vinyl, it's completely opaque and it'll give us good longevity.
Wonderful.
I, I had asked the question about the specifications and that in comparing these three bids that we got, were they all using the same material in the specification in terms of being able, like apples to apples and oranges to oranges, whether they were all equally as the same quality of material or the same material?
It's the same material.
It's interesting that they could be almost $20,000 apart.
The one vendor was very high, we had a conversation about that, but yeah, he was very high. But that's why we take multiple quotes.
Well, I'm glad we do and I'm glad that they are the same product, but that's interesting that would.
Okay, thank you very much, Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to item C.
I'll move for the approval of agreement with King Relocation Services.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dr. Stern and Mrs. Marcus. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Item D.
I'll make a motion for the award of bid number 2324-015 for boiler purchase only.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells and Dr. Stern. Any questions on this one?
I, I have one, it said purchase to, for boiler purchase only. Should it read boilers or is that, because it says seven, it needs seven, so.
So I think the way the word is for boiler purchase only, you could say boiler or boilers. I think the, I think the language.
There's seven boilers involved.
For boiler purchase only or for, it is for, the quantity is clear in the paperwork, so I'm not sure where the language description is.
And I'm looking at just the agenda item and that's what made me wonder about it.
Yeah, the listing it says for boiler purchase only, but the transmittal refers to several boilers.
Yes, it should have said for the purchase of boilers only.
Well, I saw the bid and then I saw the rationale and I wondered what was going, that's the only reason I asked the question.
I think the good part of that for clarification is that we're actually voting on the agreement that's attached to the transmittal. We don't vote on the actual transmittal of the listing, so it's clear what we're voting on. Okay.
Ken, would you mind just letting everyone know where those are going?
Yes, we have a boiler plant in the tunnel at the high school, which services the STC building and the A building. It contains seven boilers, which are connected in series and they all work together. And the boilers go back to 1995, so they're well past and of useful life and time to replace.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, colleagues. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. It's, I feel like an airline captain trying to make up time in the air right now. Moving on to item 16A.
I'll make, I'll make a motion for the approval of the first reading of the updates to Board Policy 6000 Series.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Marcus. Any specific questions? I see Mr. Seaman is up there, jumping at the bed.
Yeah, so little background here, I want to thank the Board of Education, Ed Services Department and Cabinet for, in December, we were able to bring the 6000s to you for approval. So we updated all of our 6000s as of December of 2022. CSBA does do quarterly updates and so these are just a few minor language changes from our original approved 6000s. And so I just wanted to bring them to you to make sure that we were starting the academic school year with all updated 6000s for instructional practices. So that's the first item under this. And so if you wouldn't mind, you could also waive the first reading? No, just kidding.
I would make a motion to waive the first reading.
Do you want to withdraw the first motion?
Yes.
And who made the second?
I'll withdraw and make a motion to.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, go ahead. You want to remake it?
Yes, so I'll make a motion to waive the first reading of the updates to Board Policy 6000 Series. Go ahead.
Second the motion.
Okay, Judy, do you have a question on that, on the 6000s?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, I just had a couple of minor suggestions I had to the, to make sure that they're spelled correctly. And there's a few errors that I caught.
Could we make the recommendation with the fewer, because it's the.
Corrections.
Yeah.
And we have, do you want to go through the corrections real fast?
Sure. Just in 620, and I shared this with Dustin, so he knows what I'm talking about.
Oh, do you have, do you have these corrections?
I do.
Okay.
They're so minor, there's one N is missing in the word attorney. And then for the governor's holidays, the phrase needs to be rephrased a little bit. I've shared it with him.
Okay, so these are not, these are not content changes as far as the intent of the language? It's just corrections in.
Yeah, not substantive.
Corrections in grammar, spelling, punctuation, things like that?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we need to go through those then if Mr. Seaman has them or can we just accept it with the changes?
So long as you accept it with the changes, I think we're on the same page.
Are you okay with the changes?
100%. And I can give them to Pam to put them in the record as well.
Do we have to change the motion?
You could just amend the motion.
Well, amend the motion to approval of the first reading, approval to waive the first reading with the minor changes for the updates to the Board Policy 6000.
So this is our second reading? Waive the first?
Waive the first reading means you're approving the second.
I'll accept the second.
Okay, we got it. Good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Terrific, thank you, colleagues. Motion carries. Moving on to 16B.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the first reading Board Policy BP6177 Summer Learning Programs.
I'll approve the second, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Marcus. Mrs. Manichari, I'll start with you, were there any?
You know, I apologize, I, I had the documentation, I believe I had one more comment, but I don't have that in front of me. Maybe you can help, Dustin?
There was a question, I just want to clarify to the Board of Education. One of the questions was just, you'll see on this document, it's a brand new board policy that we have not had in previous years, based off of, just kind of history behind it, based off of us accepting the Extended Learning Opportunity Plan grant, which is providing the after-school care for students up till 6:00 PM, five days a week, but also an extension of our summer school model delivery. In past, we used to leverage organizations like our Beverly Hills Education Foundation and we have upcoming meeting where we would be able to offer some summer opportunities, maybe in the month of June, maybe extended a little bit into July. Now there are new rules in ed code that we do have to offer these opportunities for 30 executive days over the summer for extended day times. So we're going to start already planning and working through those changes for the following summer. But that's what this policy is about. And one of the questions was, you'll see that there's two options at the start. So under summer school, it'll be option one, option two. We have highlighted option two because we are required to offer that summer school per ed code 46120. And then in the following section, again, that question was why option one versus option two? What's the sequence? And it is first come, first served basis at this point. It is not a lottery system here in BHUSD, so we will continue to fill the spaces, obviously with a small amount of waitlist until we're able to create new sections or open up a new opportunity to ensure all the students that qualify for this program will get serviced in a timely manner. And that's what, that was the question about the two, the difference between the two options and why are they, one selected over the other? One's based off of we are required and the other one is our commitment to ensure that we're serving our community.
Thank you.
Okay, and you made the motion with waiving the first reading, correct? Nope?
No, but I'm happy to amend it.
Okay.
So I'd like to amend my motion to approval of waiving the first reading of Board Policy BP6177 Summer Learning Programs.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, terrific. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you very much, colleagues. Motion carries.
Thank you, Dustin.
Very efficiently. Okay, over to our Board Governance Handbook, approval.
I'll make a motion for approval of the Board Governance Handbook, V128222023, which is version 12.8, I'm assuming.
I'll second.
Is that correct?
I think it was last updated.
It should be 23, 24.
Last August 22.
No, the revision date is correct, it's, we do have to put the proper student board member in.
We can change that.
Okay.
You did?
No, we can, we can make that, that change.
Right, so then this should change to the new updated date.
We can do that. There's going to be some other revisions as well that are in there because we're still trying to nail down the, the actual, the calendar piece. So we'll have to make a revision, but it would be great if we could just.
So let's, let's approve it with the correction on the student board member and then we'll come back for another approval once the dates are settled.
Right.
Okay. Does that work, everybody?
That's fine.
Okay. So who made the motion on this?
I did.
Just a, can you add the friendly amendment of with the change on the student board member?
Yes, I'll amend my motion for approval of the Board Governance Handbook with the amendment of the student board member for V128 dot, dot, 22 dot, 2023.
Is that approval of the first reading since it's coming back to us?
This is not a policy, so it's not a reading. We just approve it and then we can approve it again with the new changes. So we just want to get this particular draft approved. Who made the second before, was that you?
No, I think, did you make the second?
I know, okay.
Do you accept the?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries and then we'll come back with the corrected dates and we'll do a final approval on that. But that's, that's, everything else is approved except for the dates. Thank you very much, colleagues, for that. Moving on to, we had moved the hearing, there's no more public comment, right, Ms. Crowe? Thank you. So we'll do communication from board members and we will start with you, Mrs. Marcus, tonight? That's what it feels like.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Well, a few things that I would like to mention tonight. I attended the CBOC meeting last Thursday and I have to tell you the way that Rafael and Will were prepared and the handling of reading the ledger and explaining the expenditures were really very, very transparent. And it gave, it gave the members of the committee a beautiful understanding of how we go about documenting our expenses now. And I think you are to be really applauded for that effort. And, and I think the construction, the CBOC committee really appreciated it and were very thankful. And I thank you for that. And they also have requested a tour of the Beverly Hills High School, which we're going to be arranging. And then one later on after ER is finished, we're going to wait on the ER one until it's finished. And that was my turn to go to the meeting, thank you. This morning, I attended the PTA meeting at Beverly Vista and I got to tell you, they have so much going on there right now. It's, it's hard to keep up with them. The biggest event coming up is the carnival for them this Friday. It's free for all the students who go to Beverly Vista, nobody else. And the kids get to have a really a fun day provided by the PTA with the. And so I also understand that Michael LeBeau does some of the sponsoring of it, as does the Police Department, the Fire Department are there and, and they really go all out. The rides and the food and the games are fun and the kids have a terrific time. They mentioned a lot of the events that are going to be coming up in the future. Some of them are the Back to School Night, there's Parent University coming up. Reflections is going to start, a multicultural celebration, the Not Today Cancer 5K Run, the Poker Night and of course, the Fall Sports Programs are beginning. And I guess if you want to know more about these, you just have to go online to Beverly Vista. I'm not going to spend too much time on that. And I want to thank everybody in the school district, including the Maintenance and Operations, the PTAs at the schools for the Saban Breakfast and the administration and for their strategic plan and the planning for the, that they did during the summer. It was a wonderful kickoff to the year and I really felt very, very good about it. And I think everybody in the community felt good about it. And I haven't heard any negative comments, so I'm sure it must have been. And again, I want to thank Dr. Breggy and Noah and the other MOT members that worked so tirelessly on Sunday to find out whether we should be attending school. Thank you for getting us back to school, for keeping you so alert. I think that keeps our community to realize what a great administrative team we have. So that's my report and I thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus, Dr. Stern.
So I also wanted to mention that the, the way that the, that Dr. Breggy and the administration dealt with the crisis Sunday night regarding whether or not to close school for Monday, and I thought it was handled very well. Not only in terms of the communication piece, I liked that he proactively, it was stated, we will be updating you at 6:00 PM and then at about 9:00 PM. I think that was very good for rumor control and just keeping people calm in these new days of some unforeseen crises. I also really enjoyed the use of the social media feature. Dr. Breggy, I really think you should have been like a weatherman or, it was just great. And he was there and practically like blown away by the hur. practically like blown away by the hurricane. He's like, "And now we've just had an earthquake." And it was, it was really very entertaining and, and great. And I think it was just very well-received. Um, on a more negative note, I wanted to caution people that when they write on, when they write comments on some of the, uh, district websites, and I think a lot of these were some kids, and I know kids can just overshare on social media, but there were a few comments I saw that just were really, just really not appropriate and, you know, some use of foul language, but more so saying, you know, uh, "Damn it, they better shut down school or else." And, you know, just being, um, a bit over the top. And I just want parents and, and viewers to remember that they need to continue to not only monitor what their kids might post, but also to be a role model for how you deal with online commentary because it can be traced to you very easily, uh, whether or not you try to create a site and representing another person who is not yourself, um, or you are saying things that are very negative and, and using foul or racist language. So it won't be tolerated. And it's just a continual reminder that some of the misbehaviors that we are dealing with are in fact, um, committed online and, uh, we need to just be conscious of that as we move forward. Thank you.
Um, Sophia, any other comments? Okay. Mrs. Wells?
Um, well, I just wanted, uh, congratulate everybody on a great, uh, start for the school year. I've only heard really positive feedback and I think we're ready and it's taken a lot of work and from the communication to, uh, all of the planning and the execution of starting the school year is really, we're off to a great start. So congratulations to all of you.
Just a ditto to all my colleagues. Thank you.
I forgot one thing. Of course, I always forget something. Um, I think it's this Sunday, there's the AYSO is having their kickoff and, uh, Mrs. Marcus has been asked to throw the first ball, or should I say, kick the first ball?
Um, thank you. I'll, I'll get it. Um, also Sunday at 11 is the, um, the reading event.
Yeah.
At the library, the Lessons in Chemistry. Um, apparently it is already sold out, but they are keeping it open because just to balance out any no-shows or whatever. So, but they're already, they've maxed all of the rooms that they have for this. So it's a very exciting event. Um, and it's about literature, which is always a good thing to celebrate that and have that many people excited about it. I have just finished my sixth book this summer. That's right. People didn't even think I could read. Um, I want to thank, uh, people in the community who did come out to see our, to see our concert last Thursday. You're laughing a lot over there. See our concert last Thursday, um, over at Beverly Cannon Gardens. Thank you, um, the staff that came out and all of the residents that came out. It was a joy, uh, to share that with the community. Um, and I also want to give a special thanks to Dr. Breggy and his staff. The strategic plan meeting was one of the first promising moments I've had in a long time about the district coming up with a vision and a mission and, um, having a staff that is willing to say not only what we're going to do, but how we're going to do it and clearly outline it in a way that it is comprehensible, um, it's detailed, but it's also measurable. And it's, it's important for us to hold ourselves accountable in every department of the district, but as, uh, Dr. Stern was pushing for today, that we need to really have vibrant conversations about academics, um, more often if we really want to see a change. And today I think was a great kickoff to those conversations. So, um, and though that meeting was filmed and I guess will be available at some point, um, for, for viewing, but, um, I'm very pleased with, with my colleagues and our staff and the progress that we're making in those specific areas regarding student learning, um, especially today. So with that, thank you very much. We will see you in September as the happening song goes and have a wonderful evening. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Ms. Krausau, am I signing anything?
No.
Good to go!
Yeah.
Make that.
Uh, sister waving.
Yeah.
Uh, sister waving.
Yeah.